All right, so this is the Great Barrington planning board meeting for Thursday, August eighth, twenty twenty four. We are, I didn't get the gavel this morning, apparently, no one cares. So to join the meeting remotely, you can see the agenda and this meeting is being recorded. Am I gonna need it? Okay, the meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else who wants to record the meeting? No? Okay, great. All right, so try to call us to order. Malcolm is missing, but everyone else is here.
Maybe I may report the meeting in your part of the.
Okay, thanks, Claudia. Okay, appreciate that. Thanks for letting us know. We have no Form As?
Correct.
We have no Form As, so the next item on our agenda would be the minutes of July twenty fifth. So we have a motion to approve amendment. Thank you, Jonathan. We have a second from Pedro. Do we have discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. And next item on our agenda is a discussion of the master plan, demographic data, and changes to the last master plan, next steps, et cetera. First, spent us around some demographic information. And I sent around a revised letter for communication outside of other boards and committees. So, Chris, do you wanna?
Yeah.
On demographic?
Sure, I'm not sure how far down you wanna go. What I did share with the board, which I'll put on screen.
This will take five hours.
Well, you know, the the tables and charts serve. You know, some of these tables are what you see in the twenty thirteen master plan, and I just added the twenty twenty data. So you can see the changes, which is something that you've been asking about. This, the first couple pages that I sent to you have to do with population, age, the next few pages after that, housing units. And there's a few other attachments to what I sent you, which are taken from the Berkshire County Economic Development Strategy, which look at other trends, including economic income and occupational trends. But starting on the page, on the first page of the packet is is population. So I, this is, this goes back to eighteen hundred. And twenty twenty, here we are, seventy one, seventy two was the ten year, the decennial census count. So i- in terms of population, you know, I think Great Barrington is holding steady, I think, I think you could say, since since twenty ten. The county is down, the state is up. You know, I think trends forecasted in two thousand were that Great Barrington and all of South County would decline quite dramatically, and that's certainly not been happening in Great Barrington or in South County.
Can I ask a question about that, just in in general? With the population, that's who reported during the census that they were residing here, right? And so i- is there any way to parse out on that permanent versus visiting, like, non?
They they are reporting residency here.
Okay, all right.
Any, I thought there was some issue with the twenty twenty census. But we accepted all the data, all the, we just accepted it, whatever it was, not just particularly the Great Barrington, but certain statements of the population that counted as correctly as others.
At least, the these are the official numbers.
I know, I know, I know.
When was the census actually done? Was it during the pandemic?
Census days, April first, so it was during the pandemic. It was extended several times to to make sure that there was as complete a count as possible.
That's what I was asking about full time. Yeah, because I wasn't, people came up right that early, right? Yeah, I think it was.
Again, it's it's looking at place of residence. So if they're residents, they're voting and whatnot somewhere else. It's not counted as a resident here.
There are a lot of people moved up here to their second home.
If it was their residence at the time, they are counted.
Yeah.
Okay. I wonder if it works like, should we make an exposure roll just to see like what the words?
So here we are on table one, page one, going down the rabbit hole.
Well, no, I I just, I I mean, anecdotally, I know people like Jonathan said that came up and decided to stay. And so did they feel at that point in April or May, like, yes, we are reporting this as our residence? And I know multi-generational households that came up, like the grandparents owned a second home, and their kids and their grandchildren came up.
You're you're never gonna get a number that you're satisfied with. But, you know, so I think.
Census is always.
Go with.
Fuzzy.
Census is always gonna be fuzzy, and it's gonna get more fuzzy now because, you know, do you really wanna let them know you're here?
I don't know.
There were a lot of other
A lot of the issue.
Places that
We're gonna get wider.
Tried to capture the pandemic-induced population changes. IRS tracked data, but it's county level. But you can see changes from like, for example, New York County or Kings County in in New York City to counties outside of the city. You can see those changes pretty dramatically. They tracked, the post office tracked change of address requests. Some places tried to track increased energy usage or water usage, municipal water plants or energy plants tried to track those sorts of things. We we did not do that around here. Places like the Cape tried to track that a little bit to see what the pandemic-induced bump was, but whether they were permanent or not. It's not, not really known.
There's a risk of seeing an IDA, the CDP sample.
Census designated place.
Okay.
It's a smaller geography within a New England town.
Okay.
Not all place. They 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 represent more or less concentrated areas. There's a diagram of the CDPs in the old master plan, in the twenty thirteen master plan, to show exactly where the boundaries are. Great Barrington has a couple of sub-sensus block groups, but the generally, the town of Great Barrington is is reported as one whole unit. The margins of error at the CDP level are really dramatically high. So even though I provided some data at the CDP level, if you look at like median income or, like, you know, for Great Barrington CDP or East Tonic CDP, the the errors are like twenty or thirty thousand dollars one way or the other. So it's 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 bizarrely it's it's, I should say dramatically.
Why is that?
They're just such small areas, which really, with really small sample counts. So, statistics.
And so just to be clear, just to say it on the record, the Great Barrington number is the the geographic boundary of the town or the municipal jurisdiction of the town, including both the population centers in Great Barrington and in East Tonic.
Is there?
Yeah, okay. Right, all of our residents.
And reformers.
And and those are people who live on the hills and hills. Okay, great, thanks, Chris.
The second table was something we did in the last plan to to just tracking Great Barrington and surrounding towns. These are all towns that touch Great Barrington, right? Yes, it's true.
Can I ask a stupid, can I join Jonathan's stupid questions category? This is not, it's not rabbit bowling. This is just that we'll be doing this in twenty twenty five, and we will have gone through COVID, and a lot of the numbers shift once you get past twenty twenty of, you know, trends and all of that. So I'm just wondering how we factor in, or should we be thinking about the impact of COVID, et cetera?
So the the other data set that the census produces, which is usually helpful, aside from the decennial data, which is twenty ten to twenty, is the five-year ACS, or American Community Service Act. And that's done kind of on a rolling sampling basis every year. And they compile those into five-year estimates. So there'll be a certain very small percentage of Great Barrington residents who get an ACS estimate request in their email or in their it might be a couple, a handful of you. I got one once and it took, it was a very detailed, much more detailed than the decennial census. It took about an hour to fill it. But it it gets a, it gets a a lot deeper level of inquiry. But the sample size is really, really small, and the margins of error are much greater. So there's, it's kind of a continuing sample, but it's not necessarily as reliable as the decennial benchmarks.
I'm only asking this is because if I've only been in town for six years. And so I'm just trying to understand the changes that I've seen, but that's not actually everybody's issue. It's my my set of concern nerves, and I'd rather rely on the data being correct than on.
Just, you know, we won't spend too much time here tonight, because you have reason to look at this. Ten four is percent, percentage of the population by age group. Showing the CDPs again, this is what Jonathan asked about the census designated places. These margins there are greater, keep in mind. But it's interesting to see. It's interesting to me. Town of Great Barrington, town of Lee, is rough comparable to Town of Great Barrington, Berkshire County, Cape Cod, Barnstable County. Factors into this, this was a carryover from what we looked at in twenty thirteen, can, a lot of comparisons were made to seasonal areas like the Cape. So that's why you see on State County, some of these charts and tables. The the age group of twenty five to forty four, that's kind of the age group where you're thinking of people are starting families, maybe, or moving up in their careers, they're usually in the labor force, maybe starting a business. That's a really important age group to have. Great Barrington is declining, as are the counties, the states, the nations. We were reasonably optimistic, I think, in the last master plan that that age group is kind of leveling out. But in fact, it's not, and Great Barrington or anywhere around here, and the median age overall, as you can see in the charts below, is is definitely increasing here and and across the country. Actually, it's not just a great direction then. In terms of race and ethnic composition, this is just the twenty twenty data for the town, the two CDPs and the county, just looking at white, black, or African American, or Hispanic, or Latino, of any race. The twenty twenty data is what you see on the screen. For Hispanic, Latino, of any race, Town of Great Barrington, nine percent of the population is there in twenty twenty. That compares to just six percent in twenty ten. So all of all of these numbers are different this year for the, when twenty twenty for the Town of Great Barrington. The trend is certainly more diverse. That's not across the world. Berkshire County is not as as Oh, yeah, Berkshire County might as well. I'm sorry. I was reading that backwards. Let's see, this is just the rate of population change by decade. It's a really busy chart. You can see some towns have really exploded, I guess you could say, in relative growth. Just going down, what's the next one I want to show you? You can read these all at your leisure at the time. This is the median age. With the blue bar being two thousand, the orange in the middle, twenty ten, and the gray twenty twenty. You see in every geography, the median age from from two thousands increasing.
How old compared to the US average, aren't we?
And state.
And state.
And the Connecticut Valley, and the Capital District of New York. So if you if you look at Connecticut Valley, and you'll see the CDS, the Economic Development Strategy does a lot of comparisons to the Connecticut Valley towns, so-called Pioneer Valley, and the Albany Capital District. And Berkshire County generally is is older, lags of income, lags of in occupational earnings, say that. But onto housing units, certainly there has been an increase in housing units. I think you've all seen that. What's interesting here is that the only other one we see a significant bump was the B. Which is interesting to me. That's before Jeff's project. Yeah, so that's interesting. But obviously, Great Barrington housing units are going up. In terms of subsidized housing, I think you all knew this, this is the so-called forty B limit. The value was reached, what they call the safe harbor, above ten percent of the I don't know how MassDHCD calculates this, but they call it year-round units. I don't know what that means in their definition, because it doesn't equal anything I've seen. But that being said, we do have ten point five four, ten point five four percent subsidized, so we're above that forty B limit. That's that's better than state, it's way better than ten. So a lot of, a lot of the efforts this point has done with regards to the forty R, smart growth district, yeah, just the town's investment in zoning in general has helped this to to increase. The seasonal units, the census tracks that, they track it as housing units that are vacant for seasonal reasons. You know, they're not intended to be occupied year-round. The census estimates that at about twelve percent, and that maybe around fifteen percent, according to our assessor's data, which which uses what they call non-domicile property tax bills. So I think you're kind of dancing around a question of second homes and seasonal units when you're talking about the pandemic, but
Not really.
Allow me to footprints. Overall, the so-called second homes or seasonal units seems to be decreasing slightly. So whether or not that is people who moved here and decided to stay here. You know, maybe they used to be just visiting in second homeowners, maybe now they have set up residence, of course, making our age, median age go up too.
We're the Airbnb's for now.
We're the best.
What category?
It's anybody's guess. It could be counted as an occupied housing unit, like, if it's a, if it's a single unit home that somebody resides in. We don't, yeah, there's there's no way to, it's apples and oranges.
But the, so the assessor doesn't deal with that at all?
Deal with what?
Well, like, as a category? That is just one or the other?
Short-term rentals?
Yeah.
No, the assessor doesn't, not in the Let's see, housing units, you've seen this data already, just to inform. This next chart, residential growth, is something that staff put together a year or two ago. You've seen possibly this iteration last year, when we had a joint session, I think, with the select board last year. This is Great Barrington, just units completed, permitted, and planned units. This is not necessarily affordable units, it's just sort of major developments, like, all the family, not single-family homes. You can see between, you know, let's see, completed units, you've got one hundred and seventy three. I estimate for population is three eighty two.
I have a question.
I'm I'm just trying to guess how many bedrooms are in that unit, and if it's fully occupied, what that might be.
When you, your office figured out these estimates, were you estimating for new residents of the town or or just a possibility for accommodation in these new units or?
They may or may not be new residents. Some, some may be second homes moving into a new unit. They may be moving within the town. Students, they may be abandoning a unit or selling it.
So it's just like possibility of accommodation.
Code population. Yeah. Yeah, this is how many people they could accommodate. It's not necessarily new residents. Yeah.
But you would generally think that this is a net, these are net increases unless these are already occupied, right? Like, these addresses are already occupied by a certain number?
Possibly, but you could imagine, let's say, one of these is a multi-unit residential. And I know in my neighborhood, there was a six-unit rental apartment that was demolished. Where did those people go? So maybe they went into one, you know, and now it's a single-family home, so you've got a difference of five people. Where did they go? So there's there's mixing within the town as well.
Because your This is future. So like North Plain Road and and Maple Avenue are definitely future.
Oh, yeah, and they're listed here as future, sure, yeah, in 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 the chart.
And we don't have that chart, right? The opposite of the multi-unit going to a single family?
No, units lost.
Units lost.
Yeah, we don't have that chart. What I did want to bring your attention, this is something that we discussed with the slide board, and the the staff discussed with the Select Board and Finance Committee during budget time, is we are seeing increased calls for public safety. So as we talk about master plan and budgeting, the public safety departments, meaning fire and police, are looking at staffing relative to population changes.
Is that related to age or crime?
Or something else?
I don't know. It's calls. I
Him probably knows.
It it may be, it it may be age-related medical calls, but I think I think there's a a certain young prime element as well, yeah. So this housing growth and population growth, even though it's not a lot of growth by the numbers, there's certainly an impact being felt. I think everybody in town feels it, but services are feeling it as well, municipal services. So it's a, it's a real trend that you should be aware of as we, as we look forward.
I mean, certainly, half of these, the people we are projecting for new residents, that's a lot of people.
Right, right. Let's rate of housing change, I don't need to get into that.
I don't understand that. This chart, what rate of housing unit change?
Just decade by decade, how many?
What does that mean?
How many units are added?
Oh.
That's all. It was total, total units.
Okay, got it.
So you, I mean, basically, here's the snapshot. Each each one of these categories is multiple years for a single town. So let me just scroll up, and you can't see the towns. But what's the trend immediately that you see? Boom, big jumps in the eighties, in the decade of the eighties, and mostly in the nineties, and a big slowdown after that. Not many units added overall. So I think it's just a interesting trend. My eyes is anyway. And and once we look at building permit data, I think some of you were asking about building permit data. You probably see that as well. And and I think, as we've talked about, the housing crisis, we've all, we've all talked about the lack of new units being built.
And the cost is driving around too.
And the cost drives that, sure. Cost of building, off the land, the availability of land, interest rates, et cetera.
What was driving the change in the nineteen eighties?
Not sure.
What are you talking about? It's not the boomers? Like buying their
There's, there's probably twenty different interrelated factors.
In the eighties, no?
No, no, that was early.
It's my Can I, can I, just one comment? I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at the common ground that I sent you, the newsletter. So there's, Mark Malloy put some data in there about the cost of building. And it's really interesting. Our advisor to read it.
Yeah, but just for clarification, this is a newsletter issued by the Berkshire Regional Plan.
Right. Isn't it? It basically it draws a difference between construction that happens by the owner as opposed to construction that happens by contractors. And the price, the median price difference is astronomical. It's almost like it's almost like a hundred percent more if a contractor builds your house, than if a cut, than if a an owner takes on the responsibility of hiring the carpenter and the
The owner just plays contractor?
Yeah. Well, this is, yeah. Call Mark Malloy, because I did, and that's what he
I mean, it's interesting, I'm not, I'm not sure how it factors into what we're discussing. I, I think there's probably a lot to unpack there.
Well, we just brought up the cost of construction, so I just thought I'd bring that up, because you know, obviously, it interests me, my business. And the the price of construction, inflation in the construction industry, all of these things are really they, I mean, here's some data that shows you that it's kind of, some of it could be artificially created.
Also, a lack of labor.
I I don't want to get into that. I have a lot of opinions, but they are not related to the master plan, so I'm gonna just
I just thought it was interesting. You guys should read this common ground. It's really interesting sometimes to have some interesting influence.
The the next interesting thing I came across was the housing unit by type in Great Barrington versus versus Berkshire County. And this is ACS data, as you can see at the bottom of the screen in the source, acknowledgement there, citation there. So it's not as precise, but it is, it is interesting to see Great Barrington has a larger proportion of housing units in five to nine-unit structures than in the county as a whole. Just thought that was interesting. Let's see. Hustle size by whether you're owner or renter, your household or moved into unit. As I noted in the chart, this is not necessarily the year the household moved into town. They may be moving within Manhattan. The CDP, CDP data again is probably a little off, but you can see this grouping. Let's see, let's look at the second bar in each grouping, which is great, which is the town as a whole. You see, there's a pretty good concentration since twenty ten. Probably about forty percent of households have moved within the last ten years or so. Maybe they're new. Meeting the household incomes. Pretty wide margins of error again in the CDPs. So compare the household income where Great Barrington stands, which is here, versus the state, which is this one. Okay? Household income in the state is a lot higher in Great Barrington. But then look at the housing costs. Great Barrington's housing costs are almost up there with the state, even though there there's such an income difference. Let's see. Housing cost of rent or occupied units is here, gross rent as percent of household incomes and rental units. You can see Great Barrington versus Berkshire County here. Berkshire County has a really high proportion of people who renters who would qualify as severely cost burden, paying more than thirty-five percent of their income for rent. The town's is not as high as the county, but it's still various.
So so this is saying that, what is it saying? Forty-eight percent of Great Barrington is paying more than what we think of as affordable?
Yes.
And the county is, county is
Go ahead.
And the county is similar, forty.
This doesn't make sense to me. That the median monthly cost for rent is a thousand dollars in Great Barrington?
Yeah, again.
I I don't think that's accurate.
I think it's one, higher or lower?
Oh, it's higher, sure.
Yeah, that'd be my
Yeah, I I think the, I thi- this is where the the ACS, which is this role estimate, is is getting it wrong.
But it's, it's, so is that?
I think, I think it would be interesting to see this chart versus what we know in the marketplace. For new units being offered, it's probably dramatic.
I mean, because affordable housing is like a thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
We'd have to
So that's me, yeah.
All right, so there is some information attached, which which you can see. The other table I included in here was looking at land conservation, land added either by the town or the state or land trust to their, to their holdings. Um, since twenty thirteen, the total is almost thirteen hundred acres added as conserved land, and that's not necessarily counting all of the agricultural preservation restriction land. The rising pond land is not yet added, that's part of the rest of river agreement. But technically, it's coming to us. State land purchased a portion of East Mountain Forest. Um, federal land and dead on anything, land trusts have been very active since the last master plan. This is a parcel of GBLC bought just north of the brewery on Stockers Road. Uh Berkshire Natural Resources Council has been very active as well on their um uh effort to preserve bridge lines. The trustees reserved flag rock portions of of the Monument Mountain. That massive, you could say. In terms of agriculture, APRs and conservation restrictions, about two hundred and twenty-four acres added. Some of these were in concert or in like a chapter sixty-one A tax um uh program, but then were added to permanent agricultural preservation restriction, for example, Windy Hill or North Plain. Actually, all of these were in chapter land. So um you know, you look at this and you think, oh, my gosh, the amount of land that must be tax exempt must have increased by almost thirteen hundred acres as well. The actual, in terms of valuation of tax exempt land as a percent of the town's total valuation is dropping, which is good. Um, because it means we're not just conserving land and taking off the tax rules, shifting burdens. Obviously, tax bills are going up, they're going up for multitude of reasons. They're not necessarily going up because we're conserving land. They're going up because costs are going up.
Is that just conserving land have an adverse impact on the uh cost of building on it?
I don't know.
Define adverse?
Or it would raise the price. It the more land we take out of circulation.
Right, like basic economics.
Presumably, it means the remaining land has more value.
Yeah, yeah, presumably it would mean that. Um, I would say that most of the land I see on this list in red that's been added is generally not buildable anyway. Probably some homeless, I think it was. Portions of it may have been for a couple of homes at the most.
No, no, I spent a lot of time on that, yeah.
Well, if you could get across the web.
The front edge isn't much, and then, yeah, you have that spot, and then it's the wetlands and then the hill, right?
Yeah. But I mean, it's a good observation because less land is buildable for whatever reason.
Yeah.
Whether it's conservation or zoning.
I'm not against conservation.
Yeah, oh, no, no, but it's it's a good discussion. As less is buildable for whatever reason, whether conservation, so whether it's by ownership or by regulation, zoning, obviously, price
City Mountain Act.
Right, whatever it is.
Yeah.
But unless
Any sort of restriction, a housing restriction, a historic restriction, if it's less buildable, a height restriction, we don't have that. If it's less buildable, obviously, it becomes ricer, scarcer, ricer.
Yeah, but the reality is probably would have only been two units unless like the trust got a hold of it or some kind of by conservancy anyway for housing, because when older bill, like, do you think some developer was going to come in and just put multi-units there?
Chris, we have a number for total amount of APR land?
Uh, no, not at my fingertips.
Because just with the amount of land in town, they're basically third of the land in the town. They're like around thirty-one thousand acres.
The town?
Well, if you have thirty-one thousand acres, your total acreage at the end of this chart here is ten thousand eight hundred. Town alone.
Thirty. Well, the town, the town owned portion is only four, about four hundred and sixty-five acres.
What about that, the end of of all of this?
So that's, that's, that's all, that's all concerned land as
To of all the conservation land, does it count APR land in this number?
Uh, no.
So, okay, so let me rephrase my question, this incorrect, is a third of the land in town is concerned? And more than that, because you don't know what the APR number is.
Right. Yeah, there's about what we reported in the twenty thirteen plan, that about a third is conserved, and it's gone up slightly. Yep. Um, so you have a lot of data. Chew on, I provided the UMS Amherst, that's the decennial data. And then also in your packet was the um some excerpts from oh, what I also included in your packet was the most recent outreach report, which is produced by the National Housing Coalition.
Excuse me, maybe a copy of the data?
Do you, do you want to, uh, can I email it to you?
Please.
I'll just evaluate it. So the out-of-reach report, uh, let's see, I need to get this in front of me. You may have seen this, I can't remember. Um, it essentially looks at how much you would have to earn to to
I thought that was really interesting.
Before, the main rent, um, and this is leave statewide. I believe. So if you're earning minimum wage at fifteen dollars an hour, the calculations that you'd have to work ninety-eight hours.
Two and a half people.
I mean, it's
To afford a modest one bedroom.
So you
That's where you see the the real discrepancy between housing costs and wages.
So this is like one better.
Even the that housing wage in quotes, what does that mean? It breaks down and it's
Yeah. Clearly, I I will send this, oh, send this to you. The housing wage for, oh, this is right, this is the Berkshire County one, I think I sent you. So the what I call housing wage is needed to afford a median two-bedroom in Berkshire County, you have to make twenty-seven ninety an hour. In a service economy like Berkshire's is, not many people make twenty-seven ninety. I didn't, I don't want to get into
I'm not sure if the hospitality workers even make fifteen dollars a month.
Oh, yes, tips, yeah, tips are
They could make more, they could make less. It's not, they don't have a guaranteed minimum wage. And that's a huge portion of work. Workers here.
So there's a lot here that's not nearly a conference or we go all the data between but it's
But it's, I mean, the material for the CDS is really interesting. And you start looking at the um the jobs that are available, how people earn their money, and where we're going with that, and it's not looking free.
Right.
All things to think about. Thank you.
Chris, that was great. Are you going to keep?
Now, we're thoroughly pressed.
Well, and that's, and even that chart is if you can find a place.
Right.
Like those are occupied places and how much you would have to make in order to, right? And so even if you're making that, you're not guaranteed to be able to rent a place, because there's only a certain number.
Which is how we end up being rent burdened, right? You know, so it's hard, hard to look at these one by one because they're all parts of whole.
So I do think that the joint meeting with the select board would be September twenty-third.
Okay.
I think it's
It is for October, sorry, that's what we discussed, yeah.
That changes election.
Okay.
September twenty-third, you said?
Right.
Nine twenty-three and four at five P M. I'll put that in our calendars. And our goal there would be to discuss a little bit about demographic information and a little bit about um kind of engagement and outreach and try and get some focus around key areas um jointly with the select board that we might have identified as priorities for an update.
Well, I'll send this data back to the select result, but I don't think that night needs to be a rehash of some data. I think it should be a discussion of how you want to proceed.
Within our, you have to be pretty focused.
Yeah, um, you know, are we prepared to proceed in what manner? Are there budget implications? What's the timeframe? What's the priorities? Are there issues that board members see as particularly important? Groups or boards or commissions that are particularly important to have represented in that process? Those sorts of things, I think would be good to come.
So we need to come as a board ready with all of our answers for this?
I think, I think so. I mean, a few months ago, when I went to the select board, just in our initial outreach phase, the um the focus there was really on tasks that the select board was working on for implementation of the current master plan. But I had previewed that our goal was to move beyond that, like we wanted to take a status, you know, a snapshot where we are, what the status is and see what items were mean on the to-do list, if you will, and and then start evaluating whether it's relevant to continue to carry those items forward, to shift gears, and then to consider these other priorities. So, you know, they'll get their juices flowing and start thinking about that, and I know they keep a pretty detailed priorities planning list, and I don't know if that's been updated recently based on their current exercise. So, you know, they've got a priority planning list, we want to see where that meshes up with master plan issues. And then see what direction we want to take.
So do we need to have like the like what kind of staff resources it's going to take for revision versus?
Honestly, I would rely on Chris to give us a sense of what what things take staff resources. So I know we've talked about, you know, evaluations of land cover and land use that might be a GIS exercise. We can't do that necessarily amongst ourselves. We may need to seek an outside consultant to help with some of that, so some things of that nature.
Randy, um So getting ready for the twenty-first.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third, well, I'm coming on the twenty-first.
Okay, we have an extra lot we need.
Save me a seat, right?
So are we trying to get together a kind of like a, an outline of the things that we want to discuss to them in advance so that they're prepped for what we're looking at?
Usually, that's what I, I will have a conversation with Steve Bannon a couple of weeks ahead of time. I've already emailed him just in terms of um trying to schedule this joint meeting to say that, you know, as you know, we've done this exercise, this sort of taking stock where the master plan stands currently. We'd like to start with you guys about next steps, moving forward, priorities, schedule, things like that. So so he has a a framework of that, but we could probably suggest an agenda.
Being a little more specific about what we need would be helpful, please help us think about it a little bit more.
And I'll try to prep you all as as well. Um, so when we meet later this month or early September, we can talk some more. I'll try to write
That would, that would be great.
A memo for the boards to help.
And, you know, I don't know, Jackie, you you've had an interest and you have a good um aptitude for the public engagement side of things. When you had sent some notes in a couple of weeks ago and we were having this discussion, you had commented that the public participation and outreach strategy that had been put together in twenty thirteen was was really good, and you didn't think it needed a lot in the way of tweaks.
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying, we don't need to
Like reinvent
Reinvent the wheel, essentially, because there are a lot of good things that were
Right, but could we, in the interim, create a little bit of a framework about like this first step? And this is in a full master plan, so we're not going to deploy the whole strategy, but in terms of outreach and engagement for initially the other boards and committees and then moving into the public.
I can review that based on what was done, you know, and make it some simplify it.
Right.
Say that's, that's what we're
And then about, talked about a schedule, to try and give it some sort of framework of time.
And I can throw it all through, you know, I'll go together and then make issue one.
Sure.
I'll pick a minute, whatever.
But a lot of that, some of a lot of that on Chris's shoulders, and this, Chris had the same capacity now for
We're not talking about a full master plan effort right now. We're just talking about this next step of engaging boards and committees, which I think we've agreed to take on pretty heavily as far as being available as a resource.
But in the public engagement, wasn't a lot of that what's, we're not there yet.
I don't think we're at a full master plan, public engagement. I think we want to meet with boards and committees and see what issues there are and then
And then get out and have those meetings in the different communities like you did last time, but but that can, that can be done.
Yeah.
That's what I'm curious about.
Does it all fall into Chris?
Well, I don't know, did it? And so, did it?
We had a committee last
And can it? Or does it have to be very different?
It depends on this group to help provide the support. Now, what does that look like in terms of you know, like, I don't think we should have meetings just to have meetings, right? We want to have goals and objectives. We don't want to waste people's time. We want to like, you know, it it it's a big deal for someone to come after work to a meeting like this and offer their opinion, and I think a lot of people will say their time limited, right? And so how can we meet people where they're at to have a conversation about you know, the future of Great Barrington, and and that may need to take like a creative approach. Maybe we have a table at the farmer's market, maybe we are at school events, I don't know. You know, I think we we should be thinking about how we can do that in a soft way, and Jackie's got some ideas.
And what I'm, I'm also um thinking about is like, like, looking at what we just discussed, looking at the, at the data that we just received, that leaves a lot of things out that were discussed in the master plan. And I don't know whether we, how much we want to go down the road of making sure we touch all the different categories that are addressed in the old master plan, or do we just update them with a short paragraph or based on some of the findings that we have from the meetings with all the different towns and committees? Because we haven't, and we haven't figured out how we're getting together with the committees that were new since the
So in the letter that I hope we can have a quick conversation about um that I'd like us to try and and send out um you know, if you guys are comfortable with it, I'll send it out, but in in that letter, you know, we're, we're basically asking um for boards and committees to think about what their issues and concerns are that have arisen over the last few years that should be thought, and I think we need to gather that information and then kind of see if it fits in categories and then take that to the public, say, we're hearing that this is an issue or this is an issue, and like hear a little bit more about specifically what that entails. Does that make sense?
No, it makes sense.
Okay. I'm hoping that the committees can sort of like bubble up some of those ideas based on
We talked about timelines of them too.
Yeah, that's going to be hard, you know, to get that, because I don't know, all those boards and committees don't necessarily meet with regularly.
All right. But I'll, I'll work, I'll work with you.
That would be great, Jackie, I'm just on that. All right, so I I did send a revised letter around to everybody. I can um can read the revised letter. Thank you to those of you who sent comments. Um, so I, uh, the revised letter from the Great Barrington Planning Board to the town committees and boards now reads, dear board or committee member, as our community master plan passes its eleventh year, the planning board is evaluating whether an update or revised master plan may be warranted in the next two to three years. The planning board is tasked with maintaining and driving implementation of a master plan. The town's current master plan prepared in twenty thirteen has provided great guidance to chart our community's growth and evolution over the past decade. However, in those ten years, our community has changed in ways not anticipated by the master plan. We've gone through a global pandemic, our economy is driven by service, affordable housing has grown less attainable, and our community demographics have skewed older. We believe it is appropriate at this time to review whether an update to or a new master plan is warranted. This process will involve engagement with many levels of the community. The planning board has spent the last eight months evaluating the current status of implementation of the twenty thirteen master plan. We are now looking to your board commissioner committee to work with us to identify changes in our community that should be evaluated and included in an update or revision to the master plan. We need your help in this endeavor. In the fall, we will begin a series of workshops with boards and committees to solicit your input. In the meantime, we request you conduct a discussion at one of your public meetings to discuss changes that have occurred in the community in the past decade and issues you see as critical to be addressed in a future master plan. As you schedule this meeting, please feel free to contact me if you would like a representative of the planning board to participate in the meeting. For reference, we're providing the following materials, and I've included links to the twenty thirteen master plan, volume one and volume two. And volume two, and then I close with thank you for your volunteer commitment to the town of Great Barrington and get as many people to build and grow communities such as ours.
Remember, yeah, one addition is that I would somewhere say thank you to all the town committees that we met with. Who provided this feedback on. On our review of the master. Because we, they met with us and. Talked with us and gave us information, so so they don't get confused and saying, we're doing it again, didn't we already do it?
Sure, okay, that's a good distinction. I was waiting for Jonathan to send me lots of smaller, so I don't know if he will.
It works, it looks pretty good.
Is that? High praise.
About that for someone with a science background. Okay, um is there any major thing? Anyone wants included other than what Jackie's suggesting? Are we okay if I work with Chris to send this out?
Sure, yes.
Do we need any sort of decision on that, or can I just send it out? We don't have to like move to send the letter, do we?
Do you feel like you have your board's approval? Yes.
I do, yeah, okay, great, we will send the letter.
Um, did you speak for all of us?
Which. Is this part of like the the outreach strategy? Do we have like a, we don't have a contact list for all the boards and committees?
We do.
We do, okay, good.
Do you have an updated membership list?
I don't.
Once every time.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll send that out in the next day or two. After we make Jackie's change, so can I email that to you to put on the letterhead? Great.
Yeah, just like that.
Uh, I can, yeah, that's fine, yeah, it's totally fine, um okay. So next item on our agenda is a discussion of enforcement. Uh, so let's see, Pedro and Chris and myself met with um our new building inspector Matt Comer. Um and just discussed. Uh our observations on issues of enforcement and um. How we can improve communication between um. The building department office, which is sort of tasked with enforcement and the planning. Board um communicating what issues are priorities and. Um important to us, and so one thing I had said to Matt was, you know, we spend a lot of time. Putting different zoning uh changes together. Uh with a vision for certain quarters in the community and. Uh then we take it to town meeting and it's voted on, so we feel the community has accepted this change and then we. Spend a lot of time, you know, noodling on details of site plans to try and conform to that new zoning. And then sometimes what gets built is not quite what um was approved, and so, you know. How can we communicate to you like where an element of the site plan is very important and should should. Not be changed without coming back to the sport while also recognizing there needs to be some flexibility there. So um I think Chris offered that there's a a space where we can. Provide some specific comments, even if we don't make a condition to an approval.
The conditions will automatically.
Conditions will automatically, and and Matt um is very committed to. Um being aware of conditions that go with approvals, he has some experience where conditions were not met and that's created friction in different communities, so. He said he's very sensitive to looking at conditions, but if there are things that we did not condition that are still important, that we can provide some additional communication through Chris. Uh so either excerpts of minutes or, you know, something that's not administratively onerous, but. Provides a little bit of additional guidance, so I would like to, you know, thank him for taking the time to meet with us, he was very. Um open to the discussion and happy to have more dialogue with us, and I'll page you if you had any other observations or.
No, I think you summarized the. The conversation well.
So I feel optimistic that, you know, if dialogue, we can have a really constructive. Engagement with the building department and. Maybe see some improved uh. Enforcement with Kirksey once.
There's no retroactive. Fix it.
There, I I don't know that there are necessarily.
Retroactive.
Yeah.
Like move it.
No, we we talked to him specifically, like an example was we talked about lighting, how we don't always tell someone you have to have exactly this light fixture. But we want it to have characteristics, right? We want it to have. You know, downward um casting and full cutoff shields and an L E D that's not more than three thousand Kelvin, like these things, you know, we want to give him those. Um standards that we want to meet, but we we don't want to like burden the applicant with like a very specific picture in the event that they can't find it, so. He he seemed to understand that we were trying to like set guidelines and that he could work with those. Um and he knows that we are willing to talk to him anytime, so I think that's important too.
That's good.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, very positive.
Thank you very much for sending that up, I appreciate it, it was a, it was a scheduling. Battle, but we got there.
Well, very, very much worth it.
Um, next item is town planners report.
I did pass around to the, sorry. Oh.
Bless you.
Oh, I did pass around for the board. Um some information on recent legislation signed by Governor Healy. Um the Affordable Homes Act or Housing Bond Bill, it's been called as well. The act includes a few things, including making accessory dwelling units by in single family homes across the state. That doesn't really affect us already, right, right? It's good to see the rest of the state is catching up with us on that. Um and it does include a provision that certain areas of the state can be designated so called seasonal communities. Recognize um Martha's Vineyard and Tucket being automatic. Automatically designated and other areas, the Cape, Berkshire County and other areas that have a certain percentage of seasonal housing can be designated season seasonal communities. Not sure yet what that means, but it is a special recognition that um there are places in the state that have. An influx of people. At different times of year that can have an an overwhelming impact on local services.
And we qualify.
As well as local uh real estate markets, housing markets, and can make it really difficult uh on people. Working in the local workforce or serving in the public safety sector jobs, for example. To to be there, to live there in order to. Be there when these influx of people come in. So it'll be interesting to see what shape this seasonal community designation takes. B R P C, the regional planning commission's been active in in this, and they will certainly be active in. The rollout of any regulations.
And they're trying to get all of Berkshire County to to go in there, so.
It looks like they were joking itself, yeah.
And Lee L T A who came to visit us, yeah, she sent a message out today. The Berkshire County, so in. In Barnstable, they had to meet, I think, a thirty percent of their housing stock. At a second home, that's what's calling that, in Berkshire County, for some reason, we have to lose forty percent.
Remember I said Great Barrington's around twelve fifteen percent, so we're not, according to the text of the legislation, seasonal for that purpose, but. There may be some.
She did mention more upon them.
More to know.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good, I think, you know, keep an eye on it through B R P C.
We're we're very very certainly a. The hub of an area that is a seasonal community that is impacted.
Absolutely.
Seems fair that if there's uh. Some sort of recognition, particularly funding to help communities that are the hubs of these, you know, seasonal areas, deal with. The issues of particularly real estate and housing issues. Uh that would be much.
Some of the.
Welcome.
Ambulance.
Yeah.
Some of the data you provided, it seems like Barnstable is more of a retirement community than a tourist community.
Well, yeah, Barnstable certainly.
That because it's so isolated?
So why do they continue making these decisions about?
Thresholds lower.
We'll keep this long.
But is it going to be in time for their new? The election that we're having for our representative?
No.
Yeah, get some old speaker, hey, let's have one conversation at a time. What did you want to add, Terry?
No, I was, I was just wondering why it would be, the threshold would be lower for kid card.
I can't tell you what happens on the cutting floor of legislations.
I was, well, I was thinking that maybe because they're so isolated that.
But that's the main thing, I wanted you to all to be aware of it, um Pedro's has been good about the M S updates from. The regional planning commission on this issue and other legislation, so. Has potentially impact well statewide, but uh there's a, there's a lot of money and thinking behind this particular act and. Hopefully it helps it rise to beat some of these challenges.
Okay. Thank you very much, no pending applications or anything?
No.
The bill drums of August.
Yeah.
All right, board committee updates, issues or concerns, Jerry? Sent us something right before the meeting.
Yeah, that you didn't have to look at um before the meeting, but um. Just so you had it after, uh the uh. Uh CPC, so the Community Preservation Committee is gonna meet next week Wednesday at five. And um so we do this annually, um we're gonna reorganize, of course, but. Um we always go through the plan and to eventually adopt a new plan, so the twenty twenty four plan, so I sent around last year's plan. Um we'll start talking about it at this next meeting, um and then we'll set, I think at next meeting, set a public hearing date, um. And so if we, usually we adopt it shortly after or af- right after uh the public hearing, um so any kind of comment. Individual comment by uh planning board members or um if the planning board wants to comment as a whole, um. Um, we have time to do it, so, but if we want to do it more than individual, so individually, you just send it to me, um by email or whatever if you have. Um but if we want to um comment as a board, maybe we should put it on the next meeting's agenda.
Okay.
Um. And so one of the things you can do with the plan is you can set priorities, and so I think that's one of the big things where the board or individuals could comment to try to. Drive that. Um one of the. One of the powers that the committee has, well, the committee, its real power is, the committee decides. Who is eligible for funding at town meeting, now town meeting is the one that approves the funding, but the town meeting can't increase funding or decide they're gonna fund something that. The committee didn't pass on to them. And so that's the real power, but in the plan, the committee can say what its priorities are, so it can even go so far as to. Commit certain fu- a certain percentage of funds of that year's funds. In one category or specific, I mean, I guess you could even do a specific project if you wanted to, but um. And so that, so it is. The committee has not in the past wanted to do that, but it is something that the committee could do.
Okay.
If, you know, they were so persuaded.
Okay, great, thank you. Hey, George, anything for you?
Well, I wanted to just um communicate something to you as from my professional life. Um like I've seen that my dad been working with a group of. Um investors and builders to try and. Find housing opportunities in town. And for a couple of months, we were looking seriously at a few properties in Houston. And this last week, the the group decided. That Houston Sonic was just too hard to sell to invest. In, you know, to invest money in. Because of the water problem. So I guess my my point in bringing it up is that it's a real thing that, you know, um. Not only are people are, you know, going through this horrible situation every day, but. It's also having an economic, a serious economic development.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Um, there was a farmland protection Zoom call yesterday, and I was going to attend it, but I couldn't. Did anybody sit in on it? Because I was wondering if it would have anything relevant to the master plan. With the focus on agriculture.
I was not able to.
Okay, well, I'll track down, see what information was, yeah.
All right, yeah.
This was um. Presentation, it was a presentation by the Farmland Trust to Berkshire County. It was maybe organized by.
I see, you'd probably.
Go find out.
Jonathan?
No, you go.
Okay, then I have nothing either, um citizen speak and, buddy? No? Nothing came up, okay, anyone online, we got one. Susan, okay, well, then we will adjourn about addiction at seven oh five, thanks, guys.